Consent agenda, do we have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Support.
Thank you, Councilmember Archibald. Take the roll.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, we just have a couple of items on the consent agenda, confirmed and declared single lot special assessments and a total amount of $1,810 for the cost of removing noxious weeds or unlawful growths or blighting factors. I've scheduled a public hearing for October the 24th to hear comments on code cases, 1130 Young Street, 1906 Stone Street, 1414 Seventh Street, 1307 Scott Avenue, 2319 Eighth Street, and 1911 Oak Street. With that, we will start with unfinished business.
Number one is approving the immediate demolition of 1026 10th Avenue. This item was postponed from the August 8th, 2011 regular meeting.
Okay, is this one we had a motion on already? So we don't need a new motion?
Correct.
There is a motion on the floor, so it's open to discussion, and I wonder if we could have Ms. Harmer come up and give us a report first.
Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Moller.
Who made the motion in the second?
Well, it started on July 11th. Councilmember Archibald moved and Councilmember Miller moved to adopt it, and then at that meeting, Councilmember Fisher, supported by Councilmember Lewandowski, moved to postpone to August 8th. At the August 8th, Councilmember Miller withdrew his second for the motion. Councilmember Lewandowski offered the second for the original motion in July. It was postponed by Councilmember Lewandowski, moving with Councilmember Archibald, seconding that motion to postpone it until today's date. So the all original motion was Councilmember Archibald, seconded by Councilmember Lewandowski.
Okay, thank you.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Mayor and councilmembers, can I have a picture, please? Our building inspector has been working very closely with the family, and in fact, went out today, they were up on the roof, taking care of that north section that I mentioned in the memo. They were out there this weekend as well. So they have finished, except for the very top peak of the north section, and they have finished painting the back peak of the east section. According to the work agreement, then, all of the exterior work is near completion. Showing the back peak, apologize, the sun is showing a shadow there, but you can see where that has been taken care of. Thank you. So all of the exterior, for the most part, has been completed. The interior portion has yet to be completed. There would be a need for electrical work, some plumbing, and mechanical systems as well. The interior, as you'll recall maybe from the earlier photographs, they have removed quite a bit of the damaged drywall from the roof leaks, and they have removed quite a bit of the debris. They have stripped, in fact, some of the drywall and old plaster down to the lapboards or to the studs. But, of course, that has not been reinstalled as they await for the resources to put in the wiring and plumbing. So they have made quite a bit of progress on the exterior, and I realize she has been in contact with our office with regards to the issues that have happened in the family. And we have tried to encourage her to continue. We're out there, like I said, last Thursday, Friday, and again this morning.
Thank you, is there...
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
Ms. LaCroix, I've voted against this twice, to have your building tore down. But after voting tonight and seeing how we gave Sperry's 10 years, without exaggeration, to stay there, and it should have been tore down, I'm not going to support the immediate demolition of your house tonight because you're trying. Thank you.
Is there any questions for Ms. Harmer before, and then we can discuss it further?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Archibald.
Kim, do we have an estimate of what it's going to cost to finalize the repairs that are necessary to do the electrical, as well as turn the water back on and make this, I guess, at least bring it to code where it's livable?
An estimate with a licensed contractor would be somewhere in the range of, and I'm guessing a little bit here...
The reason I was working and remodeling gave me 13,000 or approximately, maybe could break the inside.
Yeah, I was going to say about 15,000, 15 to 18,000.
Can I follow?
Yes, please do.
I have not, I have voted yes to demo every single house that has come before us, regardless of someone I know, or the condition of the house, or the family's personal reasons, and it's not personal, it's something that I set out to do from the get-go, which was to improve our neighborhoods and get rid of the blighted vacant buildings, or the buildings that were going to take too much to bring back to life. Last time, I did agree to postpone because they have put money into the property, and I hate to see anybody move forward and then lose what they put in. But I am very concerned about two things. One, I'm concerned about future credibility on work orders that we enter, and how we enforce those work orders with others if we continue to keep postponing this particular work order. And my second concern is, that's a significant amount of money, and I'm very concerned on how they're going to pay it and how long that will take. And is this going to be a 10, 15-year project? How are they going to come up with that kind of money that quickly? So those are my two concerns, yet I am, I'm very torn, because I hate to see anybody put money into something and kick them out, but I'm really concerned about those two things.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Kind of agree with Councilmember Archibald. I think it's just going to be a matter of two months from now, we're going to be coming through over the same thing again. Now, they're going to be coming back, asking for an extension, and how long can we keep giving them? You know, I hate to see that they had made some progress, but I agree with the credibility of the work order, and I think it's just going to be another two months on the roll. We're going to be right back here at the same position again.
Councilmember Fisher.
Well, I'm either going to vote to not tear down the house, or to postpone this again, depending on the direction council goes. We have a citizen before us who's working, striving, trying, doing the best she can, trying to fix up her house and do what she can do. There's two houses in my own neighborhood. One has been under work on the interior and exterior for 12 years now, if not 15, and still, there's nobody living in there. And another house, that was actually purchased through the EOC, that still is not finished on the inside, and they're still working on. And again, both these houses are within a couple blocks from mine. But the outsides look nice, and the houses are secure, and they are going forward. They aren't facing the difficulties that Mrs. LaCroix is. This is one of our citizens who's trying. Face it, folks, we live in a poor community, and sometimes it's hard to afford some of this stuff. She's doing the best that she can in trying to fix up her home, and I'm not about to pull somebody's home away from them.
Is there any other discussion from any other council member?
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Yes, well...
Well, I was going to say something before I gave the second opportunity, but go ahead.
Again, I'm going to support Mrs. LaCroix. I didn't the last two times. I agree with Councilmember Archibald, but I didn't vote to create this extension, and extension, and extension, and extension. What really convinced me tonight, two things. One, your plea, and my heart of mercy at times, very limited times, but at times. And, second of all, you didn't ask for any money, and Sperry's is going to be remodeled with $12 million in taxpayers' money, so you've got my support.
I guess I have to say that I certainly feel I'm a compassionate person, too, but I do have a couple of questions, and I just wonder if you'd come up, if you don't mind. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but we seem to be sitting here discussing your personal life, so I guess here we are. I assume no one lives in the house right now.
No, we are not allowed to live in the house at the moment. There are myself, the young lady in the red wing shirt, she works full-time, and both of her grown sons, 24 and 25-years-old, they pay their bills and hand over the rest of their entire paycheck. For four of us, we are working full-time. Four full-time workers are investing all of their money into this.
How much money have you invested so far?
$5,000.
Totally.
Yes. And that's just in supplies, I have not...
I know it's your blood, sweat, and tears that's gone into it, too, and I certainly am not discounting that. If you don't mind my asking, and I hate to do this, but we're in this public setting, so obviously, you said you're still paying your mortgage on your home.
Yes.
I guess the thing I'm concerned about is, are you putting good money after bad? I don't know how much you owe on your house still.
I still owe $67,000 on it.
And that concerns me, because it's not probably worth the money you're paying for it, and it's...
Before the market crashed, it appraised at 85. When I headed it appraised to try to remortgage it to lower my interest rates so that I'd have more remodeling money, didn't work. It only appraised at about $40,000 right now. However, I raised my children in this home, and I don't want to take it away from my kids.
I understand that, but I also hate to see you put money into something that, when you're all said and done, you know, at the end of it, I assume you're planning on moving back into it with your family? Is that what you're planning on doing?
Yes, and, yes, as well as the people that are helping me finance it.
They're all moving in?
I have a four-bedroom house, and there's me, and my mentally handicapped brother that I take care of are the only ones in a four-bedroom house. We're turning it into a five-bedroom house to make sure that the three that are moving in with me, as well as me and my brother, have adequate sleep room.
So your renting rooms, or...
No, they are going to live with me rent-free for as long as they want, for helping me save my house.
Helping you save your house.
They have not asked for any of the money back that they've given me.
I guess the other question is, I happen to be familiar with this house and what it looked like 20 years ago, and I don't understand how it got to look like this.
By the time I got it, it didn't have the nostalgic look of 20 years ago. It had gone through rentals, and it had gone through a land contract prior to me. When I got it, it was a nice home, it was fixed up, there was patches on the ceiling that needed to be repaired and such. I rented it from 1996 to 2002, and on September 11th of 2002, I purchased the house. Over the last two years, or three years, I'm sorry, when I lost my job, I started the remodeling. When they did the sewer separation along 10th Avenue, a 98-year-old house, the wall they brought in to break up the highway broke up the plaster on the inside of all of my walls. As the walls came down, as the plaster was breaking, is when I realized I was still running on knob and tube wiring in 90% of my home, and it was cracked. Thus, the reason we go in ahead and started tearing out walls and wiring, to make it a safe home. We were intending to do it room at a time until the city stepped in.
Excuse me.
Somebody's ripping her off.
Excuse me.
Now, now mortgage, Matt.
Anthony, let me continue the questions, okay? Please, thank you. But there was a lot of debris and everything in the front of the porch area when you drove by it that was very obvious for a long time.
That's not debris in my front porch, that's the belongings that I have left.
Okay.
My belongings are in the front porch so that we can maintain the work area clean and free, so that the workers don't have anything to work around.
Okay. Now, how much time do you think that you need to complete this project?
I truly believe that as long as the contractors move quickly, and we keep putting every penny we put into it, my busier season's coming up, once snow hits this ground, I'm super busy. I believe that within two to three months, we can have this house completed, providing I have no more deaths in my family at the moment.
But you're talking about $15,000, you feel that you have the $15,000?
I have four full-time employees, and we are putting every penny. We don't go out to eat, we don't go to the movies, we don't buy soda pop. Every excess penny we have is going into this house because we want to live in this. At this time, we're living in a rental. So once we get into the house, there's 650-dollar rent money that has gone back, because my mother has also, my mother is a senior citizen, 66-years-old, and has handed me her credit card so that I can buy shingles for the roof. I have a few people that has loaned me some of this money, and I will pay it back when the job is done. I have $600 a month that we're spending now for daily living expenses, that when this house is done, I have an extra $650 a month in our household. We will pay it back. I was trying to get the loans. Unfortunately, I am a cab driver with no steady permanent income. I can't hand anybody a paycheck, stop.
I understand that, and I'm quite sure the banks wouldn't probably loan when you are paying on a mortgage that is far more than what the house is worth, which...
That, the $910, $910 is not just my loan payment, that is my loan escrow, my insurance.
But you said you owed, how much did you say?
$67,000. My house payment itself is only $523 a month, I do believe.
Right.
The rest of it is my escrow and insurance and taxes.
No, but the amount that you owe on the house is considerably...
Yes.
...higher than what you could ever turn around and sell it for.
Yes.
So you're investing money into something that's...
Another reason I honestly did not walk away from this from the beginning, is I am the third house south of Lenka.
Right.
And I originally purchased this house because Port Huron Hospital was buying houses in that area. I was hoping that one day, it would have been an investment opportunity. That could still happen, on the third house from where Port Huron Hospital's been buying. And then I'd have the money to pay everybody back. I'm trying, and I'm not, I'm not just going to dump the house. As long as you guys allow me to work on it, we will continue to work. And my theory is, is I have done every single thing that you people have asked me. I have followed the guidelines. When I tore off this roof, which John is well aware of this, I found somebody else's fire damage. I had to replace trusses. I didn't expect any of that when I started in this last $5,000. But I didn't grumble, we tore out the trusses, and we replaced them. It's been an extensive project. Yes, it has, but we are still working, and I have reasonable roofing and remodeling that is willing to work with me in sections. I have the money put away to fix the weight-bearing wall. I'm just waiting for them to find the time in their schedule, because it's their busy season. Piece by piece, I don't know what else I can say. I will complete this project. God will take care of me, he has taken care of me thus far. I don't know where we pulled $5,000 out of our hind ends at this point, in three months. I never would have imagined that I could have handed over $5,000 to a hardware store, but we have. And if you'll just give us the time, we will prove ourselves.
Okay, is there anybody else while she's standing there that has any questions at all? Okay, thank you for answering the questions. Sorry that I had to ask them publicly.
Not a problem.
I think, I guess I will make a statement. I, you know, I really do feel bad for her. It's, we've, and I guess we're just as, we have allowed her to continue work in a house that I don't believe is a good investment for her. However, she has her blood, sweat, and tears into it already, and I think that, I guess, if we monitor it along, I guess I don't, I guess I can't vote against her continuing it, so... Does anybody else have anything else they want to say before we do a vote, or does anybody want to make a motion to postpone, or what are we going to do?
I'll do both. Property values have gone down a little bit, in case anybody hasn't noticed, and with 12 years of mortgage payments on the house that I live on, I think I'm upside down. So if we, if everybody starts abandoning houses that they owe close to what their mortgage is, or that they're upside down on, we're going to have a real problem in our community. You have someone who's willing to work and invest effort. I've been writing down a bunch of dates and looking at stuff, and based on what you said, and working with reasonable, when you can get things done, I want to make a motion to postpone this to our January 9th meeting.
I'll support that.
Till January 9th? And a second for Mayor Pro Tem Miller. Is there any discussion on the postponement?
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Archibald.
Not to have to put her through this again repeatedly, but I'd rather see us have a shorter postponement period so that we can monitor this more closely.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the postponement?
I just, the only comment I got to say, you know, we get in this business, we do dollar and cents, and we look, it's feasible, it, sometimes there's equity that's based on other things than just dollars and cents. They have a passion for the house, they're invested in fixing this house up, they want this house. I think we're good people here, and I think that's a reasonable request. She's trying her best, and I think her story attests to that, and I think it's a fair and reasonable thing to give her the three months that she's asked for. I support Mr. Fisher's motion, I think it's reasonable. As everybody knows, Mr. Fisher and I won't be around on that date, but I think it's a reasonable time, and the next council can deal with it, and so...
If I was here, I'm going to be around, I don't know about you.
You trying to tell us?
Well, Lord, well, I hope so, too. Yes, so anyways, I think, I stand by the support, I think it's a reasonable request. That's what she's asked for, just give it to her.
Any other discussion on the postponement? Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I'm going to support the postponement. I know, I don't know for a fact, but I've got to imagine January, we're going to be right back here, discussing the same issue again. She had a hard time bringing $5,000 in the last five months, how she can have a hard time coming up with $15,000 in the next three months.
Three months. We've been working on three months.
Same thing, if you had a hard time with raising $5,000 in three months, you got three to four months to raise $15,000 now, so it's going to be tough. I think we're going to be right back here in January, and if it comes back in January, I won't be able to support you again.
I guess I have one more comment to speak in favor of my motion that I'll never get to vote on again.
But you're going to be around.
I'm going to be around, I just won't be here. We have somebody here who wants to live in our community, who's a citizen of our community. There are people who live here or don't live here, they come and ask us for a lot of things. They may ask us for money, they may ask us for donations, they may ask us for who knows what. Here we have a citizen who wants to live in our community that's asking us for one thing that doesn't cost us anything, and that's time. It doesn't cost the taxpayers any dollars. So I, we encourage people to invest in our community. Why we wouldn't encourage someone who already lives here to continue to live here and invest in our community is beyond me.
Go ahead, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I think it's only fair to remember their neighbors at this time, too, that they've been living next to this house for how many years that it's been in this question. And I know some of the properties, I've been up and down that road knocking doors plenty of times, and I know not all of them are in perfect condition, but it's also not fair to neighbors to have to keep going through everything that they've had to go through with the property, too, so I mean...
I am the only owner occupied on my block, the rest are rentals.
But they still live there.
And they helped me and supported me in loaning me water and electricity.
Okay, we're not going to have a debate back and forth, okay?
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Two things. One, just for the record, Councilmember Fisher, EOC doesn't own any houses by you at all. The only thing we have left is oak crafts, so just for the record. Second, I'd still like to see this as a shorter timeframe, I really would. My biggest concern is I don't want to see you come back in January, and you have raised seven or eight thousand of this 15, and then we say, too late, you didn't do it, or we keep going and going and going. So I stick with my concerns. Having said that, I agree. You're working hard, it's the same reason I agreed to the postponement last time, because you have been working hard, you have put your money into it. I will support the postponement, and I pray, come January, you prove me wrong.
If I may ask a question of Ms. Harmer, I assume that you could keep us informed along the way as to her progress? I'm sure you'd be going out and checking periodically, correct?
Absolutely.
So we would be informed and know if she, for some reason, wasn't able to even start down the path.
We'd be happy to give you a monthly update, if you'd like, at your council meetings.
That would certainly be an option, then, to, yeah, okay.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
I have a question for Mrs. LaCroix. Is January long enough for you?
I believe so it is.
Because I, I want to give you five years, like we gave Sperry's, so as long as you put money into it. The only people I've heard here complain about your residents are members on the council. I have, not one of your neighbors has come forward. If your neighbors were here, I might have a different attitude, but they're not.
In fact, my neighbors, the police department sat at the back of my fence and watched us work on the roof until 3:00 in the morning, but had no noise ordinance complaints. I have the support of my entire block.
But you have my support, too, Mrs. LaCroix, and if I'm still here in January and you're not done, you'll have my support then, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor to postpone until January the 9th, 2012. If there's no further discussion...
Call for the vote.
We will take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
You have your postponement, so we'll move on with the agenda.
Before you move on, I would like to say thank you all very much.
You're welcome. Now get back to work. We will move on, and communications and petitions.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
I request that we combine one and two and make a motion that we adopt both, accept both.
Okay, if you want, the clerk could read the summary of those two, and then we have your motion to receive and file them, then, right? Okay.
Number one is a communication from Vicki Ledsworth, President of the Blue Water Area Chamber of Commerce, indicating support for the proposed downtown transit center. Number two is from Patty Samar, Chairman of the, Chairperson of the McMoRan Authority Commission, indicating opposition for the proposed downtown transit center.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Support.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Miller, this is to receive and file. Is there any discussion?
I have one thing.
Yes, Councilmember Fisher.
So, and I just wanted to point it to council, I know it's not part of the communications and petitions to accept, but we did receive a letter of support from Jeff Wine, also, that should have been photocopied and be in front of us, also.
I didn't get it. Oh, I didn't see it. Was it laying on the table?
It was just handed out tonight.
Okay, I picked it up, and I didn't, you know what?
It wasn't in the back, it was just passed out to someone tonight.
Okay, and I picked up everything at the table up there, and I didn't...
Read it if you want.
We can, no, I see it right here, and if we'd like to add that as communication number three, if no one has any objection, we can include that, too.
Well, we have two other ones, too, so if we're going to add everybody on...
Do I have to add them all?
Well, we can add them all, they're all...
Mark Misner, Lisa Adams.
Yeah, if we're going to take it from some, we might as well take them and make them part of the formal record.
Okay, I'll amend my motion to accept all five, file the petition.
Thank you, thank you. Then we will vote on that, please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes, we'll move on to resolutions, number one. Oh, go ahead, I thought it was the clerk again. I was just going to keep going.
Authorizing 16 payments.
Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move we pay our bills.
Support. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Miller and Councilmember Archibald, and that's probably the last time you get to say that.
Well, yes, yes.
Any discussion? Take the vote.
Councilmember Moller.
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald.
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
Resolution number two.
Is authorizing Councilmember Jim Fisher to continue serving on the Blue Water Area Transportation Commission for a term to expire November 24th, 2012.
Mayor Rep.
Go ahead.
All right, so, motion number, resolution number two be adopted. I think Mr. Fisher's, just the testimony of his presentation today, he's done a fine just the testimony of his presentation today, he's done a fine job there and I wholeheartedly support his continuation.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Miller. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Archibald. Is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Moller.
Councilmember Fisher, I hope you don't take this personal, but this is a resolution that normally is reserved for the new elected council. And I think we're setting a dangerous precedent by making appointments that the new council should be making. And I would be much more pleased if you came back to the new council, whether I'm here or not, and asked for them to appoint you. So, with that, I will not be supporting it. And it's nothing personal against you. We've obviously made it clear back in two thousand and six, the council, and back in two thousand and nine, this particular council said that the term would end with the person leaving the city council and/or whatever came first. It's nothing against you. Obviously, you've done a good job. And when I was the mayor, I pointed you to that position or supported your appointment. But I just believe that we are setting a dangerous precedent because the new council, we're taking away something that is, every, all the way back in history, it's the new council that makes this appointment, as far back as I can go. And I think we should leave well enough alone. And I would suggest that you come back personally, if you want my support, if I'm still here, I would request that you present it to the new council. Otherwise, I'll be voting no. And it's nothing personal, Jim.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion on...
I would just say that I think his work on this council and on this commission testify to itself, to his work, his interests, his commitment to his, to his community. We know him well and I wholeheartedly support him for this continuation.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
It's my understanding that this was requested as an exception only due to the project, so that he could continue on his term to finish this project that was coming up. Is that correct?
Well, basically, yeah, to extend the term out a little bit. Originally, two years ago, when I decided not to seek reelection, I was gonna step off all boards to spend more time with my teenage kids. That was the whole thing. But the transportation, Blue Water Area Transit is a two-person board. So, it's pretty critical if it changes. And stability is, in my mind, fairly important to what's going on there. And especially with this project and possibly another one of the works after this. So, I'm more than happy to stay on, on the Transit Commission. Or if council doesn't want me there, I'm just as happy to spend more time with my family. So, the only reason I've agreed to this is just for stability. Again, it's a two-person board. It's gonna be very difficult if council replaces. And it's not like here, where you've got seven people and all. With two people, if you have someone totally brand-new coming in, that's, you know, totally half and to come up to speed. And it took me a few years, and I know it's taken Bill Smiley, after his passing, his replacement a few years to totally come up to speed and everything that's going on. So, it's stability for that organization is what I'm, what I'm concerned about and looking for.
Can I respond?
I think Rico's...
Rico, did you have something?
Just because of Jim's dedication and obvious passion for this project and having that consistency, I will support it. And it's because of that and also for the next council. This term goes through two thousand and twelve. So, at that point in time, they could take a look at that if there's any problems with that. But I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Any other?
My comment was simply, have we checked into this? Because Councilmember Moller raises a very good point. And are we, are we violating anything in doing so? Because he does raise a very good point that it would technically be up to the next council, though I support Mr. Fisher completely.
No, there's no provision in the interlokal agreement that would be violated by extending his term. The only condition set forth in the interlokal agreement is when you appoint someone, it has to be someone who either works or lives in the city.
So, 'cause we do, I mean, I don't want to, and again, I'm fine either way. I can, but we do appoint a large number of boards that the people are on for long terms. So...
Mayor Rep?
But again, it's not...
Again, Jim, I've made it very clear. It's nothing personal.
Yeah.
But you voted to support these resolutions in the past, that it was at the end of the term and everything. All I'm asking is that you come back to the next council and ask for it. That's all I'm asking. And if you don't, that's fine. It's nothing personal and I think you're doing a good job, but I just can't support it based on that. To me, it's an ethical issue. So, that's the only reason I'm voting against it. I mean, you can still take me out to dinner and I'll let you by.
Any other discussion?
I don't know if it's appropriate a time, but a question regarding if we put this proposal to a vote, where does Mr. Fisher stand in terms of being able to vote on that?
I would recommend that you abstain, though.
You would abstain? Do you recommend that?
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Thank you.
I just want to say that Jim and I talked about this and I said that I would ask to have it on the agenda. And I don't see it as an issue because this was a board, Blue Water Area Transportation Commission, for a number of years, who never had a council member as an appointee. It was, it was a council in two thousand and two, am I correct? That decided that they wanted to have the representative on this board be a council member. That was a decision a council made in two thousand and two. Prior to that time, it was not a council member that served in that capacity. That is a, it was changed at that time. And then it was, I think after that, changed back and then changed again. It kind of, I think, in all honesty, it could have even been a mistake that it was actually picked up again to say at the term, at the end of their term. But there, it is not, anybody who, as the attorney said, if they're a resident or they have a place of business in the city of Port Huron could serve in the capacity. And all we're doing is, we could certainly rescind what a previous council did. And that's when they wanted to have a council member. Or we could just ask to have the term. But that is our right as a council to change the format in which the person is adopted. It's not like we're trying to do it ahead of an election. The term actually expires in November of next year. And at that point, whatever council's in place at that time can make a choice to appoint a citizen or they can appoint a council member, whatever their desire happens to be at that time. But I think for continuity of the project, Jim has dedicated a lot of time and effort into Blue Water Transit and he should be commended for doing that. The fact that he even wants to give another year is certainly something that should be commended. So, and I'm sure his family would rather have him at home. But I don't see a problem with extending his term. It's not extending his term, it's just allowing him to continue to complete his three-year term, which expires. Mayor Rep? Yes, Councilmember Moller.
We're not only rescinding what a prior council did, we're rescinding what this council did. This council, on November twenty-third, two thousand and nine, on a seven-nothing vote, said that the term would end at the end of the term.
That's correct.
Or when they leave. So, we're reversing, not only, don't try to paint the picture that we're reversing a previous council, we're reversing this council's action on a seven-nothing vote.
I was merely making the point that it was brought up by a previous council.
And that's all I'm doing, is that we are rescinding not prior councils.
There's our right to do that. So, we can continue, yes.
Mayor Rep, I would respectfully ask that Councilmember Miller rescind his motion. And the second, I don't want this. I don't want this kind of discussion or argument here. There's nothing personal. There's no personal reasons I'm doing this, other than to help and for continuity. So, I would personally ask that this resolution, too, that the motion be rescinded and we not vote on this tonight.
Well, that is entirely up to council, to Mayor Pro Tem Miller and to the second at this point.
I understand his frustration and my motion stands. I think he's done a nice job and I don't see any reason why he can't continue. So, I'll stand by my motion.
And the second?
I'll support that.
Okay, then we'll take the vote.
I had Councilmember Archibald as a second.
Archibald. You're not gonna throw it?
Doing everyone a favor.
You're moving, Moller.
Do you like me to give up so you can have it?
No, I'm all right.
I stand by the support.
Take the vote, please.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Abstain.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
No.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Thank you, Jim, for saying that. We'll move on to resolution number four.
It's authorizing the zoning administrator to issue a special approval use permit for a homeless shelter rescue mission at nineteen-twenty, twenty-fourth Street with certain limitations.
So moved.
Support. Councilmember Moller and Mayor Pro Tem Miller. Discussion?
I would just say that the ministry to this community and to those who are down and out is commendable. And I appreciate their work in helping people restore their lives. And I just want to say thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
I remember it was probably about last November or so, last October, when he came here. And we didn't have a lot of faith in him and told him to prove us wrong. And he did. Arnie, you've done a great job over there. I said, you know, I've heard a lot of my neighbors talk about it. And I said, nobody's upset that it's in our neighborhood. And I think everybody's welcomed you into that neighborhood. And I hope you keep up the good work.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Archibald.
I think I was the hardest one to convince to support you. I agree with Alan. I really was. I wasn't convinced that we needed another shelter. I have to say that I have had nothing but positive feedback about this particular shelter, absolutely zero complaints. He has complied with all of the things that we set forth or asked him to do in the beginning of this, which was to keep it local, to make sure it was for residents only, and we weren't bringing people from outside of our community and to take advantage of the shelter. And I, too, commend you for a great job.
Any other comments from council?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember...
In addition to that, I discovered at Operation Transformations Dinner the other night that he also is extending his, his giving to the community by helping and assisting people who have left the prison setting and welcoming them back to the committee and making sure they give. It's a, it's a positive re-entry. And I think that's another sign about his giving to the community. And I commend him for that as well.
Thank you. I just, I just have one, yes, go ahead.
Arnie, you didn't have to prove anything to me. You already did it a long time ago. But you could prove something to me, though, if you took a work crew over there at Lady's house and help her out. So, thank you.
I have a question for Ms. Harmer, please.
She's walking up there. Does anybody know the tiger score?
It's three to three, bottom of the eleven.
Hi. I just have a question because I was asked this question. So, I'm going to ask you. This special approval use permit that goes with this, is it put in as some type of a deed restriction or anything with the property at all?
It's not considered a deed restriction in the legal sense of the word, but the permit itself could be revoked if the stipulations, the conditions that you put on it are not met. And that would be revoked by bringing it back to council and making that report.
So, it does, it can be revoked. It's not in perpetuity.
It's not a deed restriction that actually shows up as a legal lien on the property.
It's not in perpetuity, then. It's not just a given. They still have to abide by the rules and it doesn't continue on?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. There's no further discussion. We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Move on to ordinances.
Number one is being given its first reading and is an ordinance to amend Chapter thirty-four offenses of the Port Huron Code of Ordinances for the purpose of correcting certain misdemeanor penalties previously provided for in ordinance number thirteen-twenty-five.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewandowski. Is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Fisher?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Moller?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Ordinance number two.
It's an ordinance being given its first reading and is an ordinance to amend Chapter eight, animals, Article two, dogs of the Port Huron Code of Ordinances for the purpose of correcting misdemeanor penalties previously provided for in ordinance number thirteen-twenty-six.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Lewandowski, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Miller, is there discussion? Take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yep.
Councilmember Miller?
Yep.[1737.83]